Testing? Good evening. Welcome to the Millbrae City Council Meeting of December 12, 2017. Can we have roll call, please?
We're going to need to do voice roll call this evening. Mayor Hollibur.
Present.
Vice Mayor Pappan.
Here.
Councilman Lee.
Here.
Councilperson Schneider.
Here.
Councilperson Oliva.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. Will you stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. This is the reorganization of the Millbrae City Council for the 2017-2018 year. We have a number of dignitaries with us here in the audience. If you could please stand and wave when I call your name. We have with us from the City Council of Daly City Glenn Sylvester. Deputy Mayor of the City of San Mateo Diane Pappan. We also have former Millbrae Mayor Mark Hirschman representing Senator Jerry Hill. We have Randy Torrios representing Supervisor Dave Pine. And also David Bruto representing Supervisor Dave Pine. We have with us former Mayor Dan Quigg. Former Mayor Doris Morse. We have Consul General of Japan Soichi Nagayoshi.
Not yet arrived.
Coming? We have Mark Nagalas representing Congresswoman Jackie Speer. And Kevin Fong representing Assemblyman Kevin Mullen. And from the Millbrae Planning Commission, we have Maureen Davis. Also from the Millbrae Planning Commission Kathy Quigg. And I believe also Anders Fong from the Planning Commission. So thank you all for being— Oh. Sorry. Mary Vella Tressler, the former Millbrae Treasurer. Louis Bella, the Consul General of Malta. And we have some other commissioners tonight. Janet Creach from the Community Enhancement Committee. And Carol Kraselnikoff, also from the Community Enhancement Committee. And, oh, Yuna Stanley from the Sister Cities Commission. So I hope I got everyone. Sorry? Oh, sorry. Donna Eggball, also from the Community Enhancement Committee. So thank you all for being here this evening. So, tonight is my last night as mayor. So thank you all for being here. It's been a great privilege to serve you as mayor this past year. From making significant headway on the rebuilding of our community center to approving the modernization of our aging sewer system, we've done a lot of good work. This past year has also brought many challenges to our community. Things like residential burglaries and water rate increases have weighed heavily on my mind. But through it all, I'm happy to say that we've accomplished more good and have seen our community grow and come together in times of need. This past year, the city hired Group Four Architecture to lead us in community-wide discussions to develop a vision and master plan for the new Millbrae Community Center. Group Four held three community workshops and hosted online surveys to gather feedback from residents like you on what we need and on what we want in a future community center. More than 1,000 people participated in the workshops and online polling. I participated in many of them as well and heard firsthand your wants and needs. I believe Group Four is going to give us a good plan that accurately conveys the thoughts and desires of this community. Things like ample room for classes and events are in the plan. They also took us into account concerns that activity at the gym would impact activities in the community center. So they bisected the two buildings with a breezeway. They even took into account the integration of Central Park and how we can maximize use of both spaces simultaneously if needed. The vision that they gave us last month was exactly what we wanted, and they were able to do it because you and your neighbors shared your ideas, desires, and concerns. The community center workshops were a great example of us coming together to plan for the future. In the coming months, we will explore funding options. I know many of you are concerned about these costs, but right now, we have a once-in-a-lifetime generation opportunity to do this right, and I do believe this is worth the investment. In the coming weeks, we will be opening our temporary community center in the parking lot behind City Hall. It will provide much-needed space for residents and staff alike. This past year, we also made significant investment in our aging infrastructure. As many of you know, the city's water and sewer systems are more than 60 years old in some areas. The deteriorating infrastructure is a big concern of mine when I became mayor, and it will continue to be a major concern of mine. I'm proud to say that we are on the right track and taking strategic actions to fix our systems. This summer, we approved increases to our water rates that will give us the funding we need to keep our water system solvent and make incremental repairs to it over the next 10 years. While I would have liked to have the rate increases to been rolled out more slowly, the reality was, we needed to implement these as quickly as possible to meet the fee increases from the SFPUC and start making smart investments in our water infrastructure. I wish there could have been a better way, but these rate changes are essential to the livability of our community. The modernization of our sewer system is another project that I'm very proud of. As you know, the city's sewer has far exceeded its operational life by about 30 years. Unfortunately, cracks and leaks into the system have led to sewer overflows during the heavy rains, which have caused sewage to seep into the bay. We understood that this was not acceptable. We identified specific ways to stop the overflows by replacing sewer laterals in high-risk neighborhoods and increasing the capacity of localized pumping stations. While this work has not yet begun, the planning and engineering reports are being processed, and the funding mechanisms are in place to pay for these necessary upgrades. We expect this work to begin early next year. In addition to improving our water and sewer systems, the city council listened carefully and approved significant investments to repair and improve our streets and sidewalks. As I saw coming in, public infrastructure was going to be critical to my success as mayor. And even though my time as mayor is coming to an end, public infrastructure and the livability of our community will still be central to my service on the city council. Over the past month, the Millbrae Planning Commission recommended approval of two massive projects near the Transit Center. Next year, these projects will come before me and my colleagues on the city council. Just as with our community center, the station area redevelopment projects present once-in-a-lifetime opportunities to help shape an area that will greatly impact the economic base of our city. But unlike the community center, private developers are setting the vision and future of these projects. While the city has had disagreements with the developers, I am cautiously optimistic about the future of our station area and will do my due diligence to ensure that these projects are beneficial deals for Millbrae. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge the hard work and dedication of all of the city's staff and personnel. Each day, I see the great work that they do to keep our city up and running. And though much of it goes unnoticed, it's because it goes unnoticed that I know they're doing a great job. I also want to thank the entire city council for the work that we have all done and the support that each council member has given me as mayor. While at times we have disagreed, I am thankful to each of you for your hard work and dedication to all the projects and initiatives this past year and for your leadership to better the city of Millbrae. During that time, I've had an opportunity to work closely with Gina Pappan. She's a thoughtful, pragmatic, and diligent public servant who is an ardent advocate for the community. I know she will lead our city well. Thank you all for giving me the opportunity to serve as your mayor. While this has been a great honor and that I'm proud of the accomplishments over the past year, I know that we still have a lot of work to do, and I look forward to continuing to serve all of you for the betterment of Millbrae. Thank you all, and best of luck to incoming Mayor Pappan on a successful year. No need to stand. Yes, Vice Mayor Pappan?
Thank you very much, Mayor Hollibur. You have done a spectacular job, and it has been an extreme pleasure working with you and will continue to be. You have served the city of Millbrae exceptionally well, and you're reaching out to the community. Your meeting with the community at one of the local restaurants was a wonderful idea, and we hope to continue much of what you said here tonight because it is vital to Millbrae and the future of Millbrae. And with that, we have a little something for you.
No, I know.
And for those of you who are unaware, it's been a very eventful year for the mayor as he is still a newlywed. Would you like to introduce your family?
Sure. I have with us here my wife, Amy. My brother Evan. My grandmother Laura Vitlasol. My uncle John Vitlasol. And my aunt Heidi Vitlasol. Thank you all for coming.
Thanks.
Oh, and also my mother-in-law Patricia Johnson.
Yeah. And since the year's not over, I have a wedding gift down there I finally got.
So we held a nomination and election for mayor at our previous meeting, and Gina Pappan was selected unanimously. So now we will have the oath of office and seating of our new mayor.
And to swarm in, I have my sister Diane Pappan.
There we go. Okay, good. I raise your right hand.
I, Gina Pappan.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
And to the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you, everyone, for being here tonight. I am very honored to serve as the mayor of the city of Millbrae. The mayor covered much of what I was going to say, and I'm not going to keep anybody long here. My commitment to you over the next year is to continue the progress that the mayor mentioned. The progress to move Millbrae forward so that it grows and thrives in a way that best meets the needs of our community for both now and in the future. As the mayor said, Millbrae is 60 years old and in many other parts, much older, especially when it comes to the pipes. And we know it's not what you see, but it does affect the community as a whole. It affects our quality of life. So in repairing the pipes, as the mayor mentioned, sewers are not a pretty thing, but we are committed, I believe as a council, to ensuring that we're no longer putting off vital infrastructure repairs. So we will be continuing down that path to ensure not only the sewer system becomes up-to-date, but also that our water system is maintained and pure and clean throughout any event, because that is key, given what's happening throughout California. Mother Nature can be pretty brutal these days, so we want to be prepared for all of that. The three things, as the mayor mentioned, repairing and replacing our aging infrastructure, rebuilding the community center, and ensuring a sustainable growth through the developments that were mentioned earlier. We need to be committed to all of this. And yes, as the mayor mentioned, the sticker price for the recreation center was probably unexpected, but the importance of replacing that valuable resource at this point in time is critical to the future of Millbrae. And the longer we wait, the more the costs increase. So we hope that we can work with the community and the council as a whole to build consensus so that we can have a project that we can all be proud of for now and the next 30 years and beyond. It is extremely important that we gather together. As the mayor mentioned—
Former mayor.
Former mayor. Okay, I gotta get used to that. Group Four reached out to the community, and the community gave us the goals that they wanted to see in a new recreation center. And we want to work with the community now to make that a reality. And we are all going to have to come together to make that happen. There will be some big decisions that we have to make, but we will do that as a unit. And I'm sure it will be a once-in-a-lifetime project, but it'll be something we can all be proud of. So I look forward to working with the council, each and every council member here, to make that a reality. And we'll get to all the other aspects, too. The top three there, the repairing of the infrastructure and our economic future. You are going to be hearing a lot more about the projects around the station area. That is our economic base. Millbrae is only 3.2 square miles, and we have about 22,000, 23,000 residents. It's important that we are all engaged in the process because this will affect us for decades to come. So we look forward to working with staff who have done a fabulous job. Thank you very much for all your hard work and effort. And we will be moving to public comment because I missed the agenda here, but—skipping away. Don't you love that? We have—before we get to the public comment, we have a final acknowledgment here. It's been a very difficult holiday season for people throughout California with the fires and disasters that we've had here, but recently, we've lost some very close friends. So although we'll get to the public comment here, I do want to mention, we will be closing tonight in memory of a longtime Millbrae resident, Julie McGlaughlin. Friend and colleague of ours, council member and former mayor of Belmont, Eric Reed. And of course, the stunning passing of Mayor Ed Lee in San Francisco. So our thoughts and prayers go out to all of their families and friends, of which there were many. We're going to be wishing everybody a happy holiday season, but we'll get to that because I guess we have to do now. Yes?
I would like to acknowledge the presence of our deputy consul general from Japan who joined us a moment ago, and I would like to give you the opportunity to recognize him. He's on the agenda—
There we go. Okay, now, you're gonna have to help us with your name here, though. The former mayor tried it. Welcome. Thank you very kindly. And we will point out, too, part of bringing our community together has been a lot of the public events. Our Japanese festival that we've had now for how many years?
Twelve.
Twelve, yes, is just one part of that. And we are all proud of bringing the community together through these cultural events. So thank you very much for joining us. Okay, all right. Public comments and—
Council comments.
—council comments. Okay. Former mayor, would you like to go first?
Sure. Once again, I think I've said enough already, but I'd like to thank everyone for your support and all of your hard work and for putting up with me for the past year. It's been quite a privilege and an honor to serve as mayor, and I look forward to continuing to serve the city as a council member and working with our new mayor over the next year. So thank you, everyone.
Gina? So I would like to make a comment to the former mayor. I think that when you sit in that role as mayor, you just want to be a leader to bring Millbrae just a little closer to some good growth, and I want to say that you achieved that 100%, and I thank you for your leadership. To our new mayor, Gina, we have a long year ahead of us, and I'm looking forward to helping with whatever I can help. And I hope that your year is as bright as that Christmas tree that is out there because it's amazing. What a great—what a great way to walk into the mayor's seat with that tree outside. So good luck, and I'm here for you.
Councilmember Schneider—oh, sorry. Mr. Lee.
Thank you, former mayor Hollibur. It's been—you know, people—I was interviewed about you, and you met all the expectations that I had for you. People would want to compare you to your late mother, but I would say that you blazed your own trail, and you did a good job at that. You're young, inexperienced in life, but you're very wise and experienced in leadership. So we really thank you for that. You were very steady. You didn't—you didn't panic. You didn't go off, you know, the tracks or anything like that, because it's a lot of pressure. This year was a lot of pressure. You know, having to raise water rates and sewer rates is no fun. It's—you know, and it's one of those things that—you know, it's—it's one of those things you have to do, and you navigated as well. What I really liked was that your young exuberance. You brought a lot of new technology. In fact, you were very modest. You didn't point out the fact that you were working on the Technology Committee and trying to bring Wi-Fi to the city for everybody, and I'm sure you're going to continue to do that. And also, he was instrumental in leading the charge to get us to where we are in the community center. We are very much on accelerated schedule, and thanks to your leadership, we've really pushed that along. So thank you very much. And to our new mayor, I look forward to your leadership. I'm sure you'll bring us and keep us working together very well, and this is your third time, right? So it's not—it's not a new thing to you. And so I look forward to continue your continued leadership and your initiatives. And of course, you have my support as well.
Mr. Schneider?
To now Councilman Rubin, it was a very interesting year. I enjoyed working under you. Congratulations also on your master's degree. That was a year full of incredible life changes, and welcome to the new families and welcome to my neighborhood, and good luck in the future for all of you. To the people of Millbrae, I want to thank you for the opportunity that I've had to serve the last two years, and I want to congratulate all of you who came to the various council meetings and who wrote to us now that our email system is working. I love it when the community speaks forward. So I know we've got a big year. We're going to have many big years. That's just the reality of life now. But I look forward to hearing from all of you, and please, please, come to council meetings as well as write. I look forward to working with the city council with the big plans over the next year. And with that, I wish us all a happy holidays and a much safer holiday. Thank you.
Okay, we have a few speaker slips here for public comment, and I guess the timer's not there, but I do have just in luck a stopwatch, too. Following public comment, we will gather at Fiddler's Green, which is 333 El Camino Real, for some appetizers, spirits, and joyful discussions, we hope. So the first speaker, Wayne Gerch—I always say this wrong. I'm sorry. Wayne Gerch. Where'd she go? There she is. There she is.
Gersich.
Gersich. I'll get it right. Hello, Win.
Well, congratulations on your mayorship.
Thank you.
I'm here tonight to—once again, we need to check about the fluoridation in the drinking water because Jackie Spears wrote a bill in 1995 to fluoridate the rest of the state. And if you check out this latest video, it says—it's on YouTube, and it says 2017 banded documentary, "The Truth About Water Exposed." This tells you how fluoridation, which is phosphate fertilizer waste, that this stuff is poison. If you put your hand in, it'll kill you. And there was a toxic tort case done because the people who worked at Cargill when they had this phosphate fertilizer thing there in Florida before a hurricane, and it blew it all over the state. Now we purchase this stuff from China. This stuff was so bad, it actually ate through the limestone. So when you're talking about your pipes corroding because of the chloramine, which is ammonia and bleach, and it's corrosive, and then you have fluorosilic acid, which is really corrosive. It's so corrosive, it etches glass. They actually use it. See that frosted glass? That's what they use fluorosilic acid for, and if it's that corrosive, what do you think it's doing to you? And what's really amazing is that right now, if you watch this video, they talk about—it's the CIA's secret experiments, and this is a medical documentary. This is very interesting because our government was trying to find a drug that would make people into killers, and it was supposed to be—you know, back in the old hippie days, they were using LSD. Well, one of the things that they know that causes people to be killers is fluoride, because fluoride is imoxolozoleph, any of the antidepressants, and now that we're recycling toilet water, our kids are—you know, drinking someone else's medicine in their poop or pee, right? Which goes into the water. So now they're talking on the radio on 88.5 about teachers carrying weapons because a lot of these kids go off—these are the shooters at the schools that are on these antidepressants. And as we turn toilet to tap, and like Dr. Win Parker says, you're not only drinking someone else's medicine, you're drinking their disease, more people are gonna have these kids, you know, having more problems, and we have a lot of children that are shooting up schools now. So they're putting big cages around the public schools and locking them in. And the big discussion, even in this liberal California, they want to get rid of guns, but they want the teachers to carry guns. Now, isn't that amazing? Because these kids are becoming violent. And if fluoridation and fluoride does this, this is something that we can stop. You don't have to put this stuff in. You can get petitions. You can get these signed. You should have a town hall meeting, get Jackie Spears down here, show her this video, and ask why she put poison in your water. And if you look up Dr. Dean Burke, Dr. Dean Burke, he did the federal studies for 40 years testing fluoridated cities, and Dr. Dean Burke also says that it amounts to legalize mass murder at a grand scale. See Dr. Dean Burke? Check this out. Because this is why you need to bring Jackie Spears down here and stop fluoridation. Thank you.
Maureen Costello? And I'm sorry, Maureen's coming up here. We're trying to figure out the Alabama election here. Jones, Doug Jones. Please.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Maureen Costello, 1311 Terrace Drive, and I felt it was important to come out and publicly publicly give my comments for the record regarding the mayor vice mayor rotation. I think that the last council meeting was a disgraceful display, frankly, and tonight I think that a mayor and a vice mayor should be sworn in. I think you need to follow the protocol and honor the vote of the citizens of Millbrae by seating Ann Schneider as vice mayor at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.[1365.36][1365.36](APPLAUSE). Next speaker is Lou Sandrini.
Lou Sandrini, 265 Loyola Drive, Mayor Papin, council members. I, too, am here to address council action. Last week, Gino Dukey, a public works supervisor who probably did more than most people to maintain that infrastructure we talked about, a true gentleman, passed away, probably one of Millbrae's very finest. And tonight, in addition to the others, to honor him, I would ask that you also adjourn this meeting in honor of Gino Dukey, the most—one of the best public works supervisors you ever had, one who saved this city so many times, and one you'll probably never match, but hopefully get close. Thank you.
Thank you.[1428.36][1428.36](APPLAUSE). And we would also like to please close the meeting tonight in honor of Gino Dukey. Gina Dukey. Thank you very much, Mr. Sandrini. Helen Habib.
My name is Helen Habib, and I would like to congratulate Mayor Gina Papin on her mayoral thing, and also thank outgoing Ruben—Mayor Ruben, excuse me, for a job well done. One year ago, I brought to the city's attention that the city hall and all the city manual doors were not ADA compliant, a necessity for all city buildings. I want to thank you for making this a reality this past October. Now the handicapped people and wheelchairs and walkers will have an ease of entrance into all the city buildings, and even for me to come to pay my water bill, if I have my hands bundled with big purses or whatever, I can push the button with my elbow now. Thank you very much for making this a reality. I appreciate it.
Thank you.[1503.65][1503.65](APPLAUSE). Final speaker, Janet Creach.
Janet Creach, 939 Helen Drive, Mayor Papin, vice mayor, nobody, and members of the City Council. I'm speaking tonight because I'm deeply disappointed in three of you, Gina Papin, Wayne Lee, and Ann Oliva. You may have convinced yourself that you are preventing a disaster by blocking Ann Schneider from being seated as vice mayor and then mayor, but I ask you to consider that the real disaster here is that you—is your concerted efforts to silence the voice of your peer. I know that politics has gotten really ugly at the national level, but I did not expect to see it here in Millbrae. When I watched the three of you act in unison, it made me wonder about serial violations of the Brown Act, or maybe it was just mental telepathy. You may not like Ann Schneider, but she received the second-largest number of votes, missing first place by only five votes, or just two-tenths of 1% for you data geeks. She's well-liked by the voters, and I think you three need to just deal with it. When you censor her, in effect, you censor the people who voted for her, and speaking for myself, that hurts. There's room here for all of us. You may discount opinions on nextdoor.com, and I agree that they can be pretty snarky. However, it is not the only outcry following the last city council meeting. How many of you are here in support of Ann Schneider?[1621.83][1621.83](APPLAUSE). We are here. A petition to seat Ann on gopetition.com received 90 signatures in only 48 hours. The San Mateo Daily Journal has published two scathing letters, and I want to read a comment from Kenny Barra, vice mayor of San Bruno. And due to time, I'm just gonna read the last part. "I don't understand the debates surrounding these appointments and snubs, but I cannot imagine a dedicated council member like Ann Schneider being denied their rightful position. I hope for Millbrae's sake this gets resolved in the right way, the respectful way. Your neighbors are watching. Best wishes, Kenny Barra, vice mayor of San Bruno." I'm asking you three council members to follow the three Rs, and I don't mean reading, writing, and arithmetic. I'm asking you to reflect, to recant, and to recommend Ann for vice mayor. Thank you.[1687.58][1687.58](APPLAUSE).
And for the record, we have a petition here dated December 8th along the same lines with 11 signatures, a December 12th letter along the same lines from Eunice—
Tiqui?
Tiqui.
Tiqui.
278 Magnolia Avenue, and also a December 12th letter along the same lines from Todd Rep, who is here tonight, too. So thank you, everyone, for your comments. We wish everyone a happy and healthy holiday and safe holiday season. As I said, we are now heading over to Fiddler's Green. Thank you so much for joining us this evening, and we look forward to seeing everyone throughout the new year. Meeting is adjourned.[1746.65][1746.65](APPLAUSE).